This meeting of the City of Eureka Springs City Council come to order. The crooked call roll, please.
Terry McLung.
Here.
Joy Seller.
Here.
Dee Preaky-Pyle.
Here.
Becky Schneider.
Here.
David Mitchell.
Here.
James DiVito, absent with notice. We have five.
Okay. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Next is approval of the agenda. Motion to discuss.
I'll move.
Second. Need to add the vote for Steve Holyfield for HTC position number five. We didn't get on the agenda. My mistake. I'll take that one. We put him under HTC, under commissions. I'd also like to move Sandy up from number nine unfinished film industry tax incentive to number one under unfinished, so Sandy can get out of here. And I think that's all I have. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, sir. Number three, under unfinished business, Clean City Ordinance. Like to postpone till the first meeting in May, May 12th.
Second.
Second one is the, well, see if I can find it now. I don't see it.
Number eight.
Number eight, the noise committee postponed until May 12th.
Second. Ms. Schneider?
Number seven, under unfinished, I would like to remove until further notice.
Second. Which one?
Number seven.
Correct house lease. Okay.
I would like to add a quick discussion, under new business, of our May 26th meeting.
It's Memorial Day.
Discussion of meeting.
Second.
Are you calm?
Okay. I want to make sure we got-
Yeah, you're calm.
Discussion of the meeting itself?
Uh, no, a date for it.
Oh, a date, okay.
A date.
Yeah, I missed something here. Was it 27th? Was that the date?
She said 26th.
26th, okay.
Did you get a second for that?
I had seconded.
Yes. Anybody else? Mr. Perkoff?
Yes, I'd like to postpone item number four, under unfinished business.
For a second?
Oh, second?
Well, just until I get some more information.
Can I have a synopsis of what happened?
Three, four, and seven have been ended. Nine's been moved up to number one.
Three.
Four and seven are off for now.
Eight's postponed.
I'm sorry, an eight. Did I hear you say?
Okay, just so I'm clear, that leaves us one, two, five, six. That's it on unfinished business?
And nine.
And nine, okay, right, yeah. Moved it up, okay.
We should be out of here by 6:30.
Any further?
He's okay.
Okay. Motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Wait, wait.
Oh, yes?
James isn't here, and I've had issues going on. Do we need number one, under new business? Do you have any information?
Do I have any? No. I have no information on that.
Okay. It will be a very short discussion then.
Okay, so no postponement?
Unless you rather postpone it till next month.
It's up to y'all.
Nobody's come up with a solu-, well, what are we doing with it now? We had no solu-, okay, never mind.
Okay. Lee Vezius?
Yes.
Okay. So we have one and two on new business.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're on new business.
She ended May 26th, Memorial Day meeting.
All in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like, sign? Motion carried. Brings us to approval of the minutes for March 24th, 2014.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, deletion, corrections, anything about it? If not, approve of the minute for 24th. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Like, sign? Okay. Minister approved. Brings us to committee commission authority reports and expired terms. Don't think we have anybody here for planning. Looks like the only thing we have on committees is the vote on Mr. Holyfield for position number five from a couple of meetings ago. Motion to discuss?
I'll move.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. Mitchell?
Make a motion to accept the nomination of Steve for HTC position five?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? He's on. Brings us to public comments. Ms. Cheryl and Ms. Bridgette, y'all can come into the mic. You both have three minutes apiece. If you'll introduce yourselves to the audience.
My name is Bridgette Kucharsky. I'm the owner of Pivot Rock Village Apartments. And this is my manager.
I'm Cheryl Sharp.
And we're here today because we would like to request from the council to look into the increases and changes in policy of the water district as it pertains to our type of business, to home, you know, apartments. I have a 27-unit apartment building, and we were just recently told by Mr. Clark that the policy has changed as far as the deposits and rollovers when we have a tenant leave the apartments. In the past, and we have all the documentation of how we have been handled in the last eight years that we have on the property, we were charged a flat rate, flat monthly rate of $20, and it was rolled over into our name. So once the resident leaves, we need to have the water left on so that we can clean, the carpet cleaners can come, and we need water for sanitary reasons. We have to make sure these apartments are clean. And now, I spoke with Mr. Clark on two occasions in the last week or so, and he told us that they have looked into the policies of the water department and have decided that all along, we should have been charged a floating deposit for each unit of $75. So that's $75 times 27 units that I have, and then a $25, what did they call it?
Fee. Application.
Application fee each time somebody leaves, so that we can have it rolled over into our name, in addition to any water usage. Well, we looked over the policy, and it says that we're to be charged a minimum charge of $9.90 a month up to 2,000 gallons of water. We've never used 2,000 gallons of water to clean an apartment. Whatever the carpet cleaners use, and then for us, is maybe, maybe 100 gallons, you know, total. But we've been charged $20 instead of $9.90. And it also states that any meters that were put into service before-
November 18th of 2002.
That's why I brought her. I can't remember anything. Any meters that were already in service at that time were not subject to a deposit. And, you know, I'm just, I'm kind of confused as to why we're being charged a deposit when we were not notified of any rate increase or change of policy. We just called in to have something rolled over one day, and we're told by the water district that this is what it is now. You know, I'm just trying to know what exactly has happened that has changed, and why do I have to pay a deposit when I don't pay the water bill? The residents are responsible for their own water, so they're being charged a fee to turn their water on. They're being charged a deposit in order to get the service in their names. And then when they leave, I'm going to be charged a deposit and a $25 fee to leave the water on? You know, if that's the case, and I'm not, I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to picket the building or, you know, get crazy about it. If that's what they decide has to happen, what's going to happen is it's going to be passed on to my tenants. And I have a lot of elderly fixed income residents, and I don't want to have to tell them, you know, either you leave your water on for a week after you leave so we can clean, or I'm going to charge you $100, because that's what I'm going to be charged to switch it over. It's a business. I, you know, I can't incur a cost like that without passing some of it on to my, for lack of a better word, customers. You know, they're my residents. They're the ones who pay the bills. So I'd really like for somebody to revisit this and look at these, I mean, I just marked the two pages, 305, 306, that had the two items on it about the deposit and then the fee for rolling it over. Did you want to add something?
Well, the numbers on that they have on there, in that book, was 104402 and 104404.
Those are the, I guess, the-
The ones that I can see.
Statute numbers or something that apply to us. And all we, all we're really asking is that you look into it and let us know what we're missing here that, I mean, you know, that says we should be charged. We've been charged like 17 times over the last three years, $20, where we should have been charged $9. Not asking for a refund. I'm just, I'm just saying, we'd like some kind of consistency, and we'd like to know where it says in here, because I've gone over it, Cheryl's gone over it, we've had independents look at it, and I don't, I don't see anywhere where that applies to us. And I know there are other businesses out there who have the same, you know, that's what Lonnie was telling me, is that everybody does this. Everybody has the $75 fee. Everybody has the $25 fee. I couldn't find anyone. I, I've spoken to several property owners who have the same business as I do, and none of them knew what I was talking about. So I don't know.
You've got to have the apartments cleaned for your new tenants come in, and I'm not going to carry five-gallon buckets down from the house.
Oh, yes, you will.
I'm just saying, it's not right for me-
That's just crazy. That's crazy for us to do that.
Carrying five-gallon buckets down to clean an apartment-
Yeah.
With hot water. You've got to have hot water, and I can't do it.
Right. And we're not trying to circumvent any laws or any ordinances. We're just trying to figure out why, all of a sudden, we're told that it's going to cost me almost $3,000 to put deposits down on each one of the units, plus every single time somebody moves out, I'm going to be charged $25 again to have it rolled over into our name. Your rub's going up. I mean-
Go figure. Lucky me, huh?
Yeah. I mean, that's crazy. But, you know, I don't want to do that.
Are you going to say anything?
I just want to make, just would like you guys to look at it and let us know, because it is a hassle to carry five-gallon buckets of hot water from one apartment, from my pla-, the manager's office, clear down to the apartments.
Which is what we had to do for a couple of tenants recently, because Lonnie had the water turned off.
Yeah, I had three people moved out all at the same time.
Yeah. And they turned all the water off, so we had no choice. We have people who want to move in. We have to clean these units, you know, and that's the only way to do it. So Cheryl was a trooper carrying the buckets around with water. What else can we do, you know?
Okay.
So anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ladies.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you much. Nancy?
This way are we not going to discuss the noise orders proposed this week?
Uh, no, I think it has been postponed.
I will just come back.
Okay.
Just for the sake of-
Okay. We'll line you off of here then, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Penny Carroll? Maybe a pitter-patter. Watch your elbow. Can you get it? It may be the top one, Sandy. Once you're in here, you got to stay.
Help! We're stuck!
Help!
I was going to say, don't scream "fire!"
Okay.
There were people trying to get in.
Okay, move along. Get you out of here tonight. My name is Penny Carroll, and I am here to encourage you to sign the Clean City Ordinance. I think it's a wonderful ordinance. I think it's a great idea. I sell real estate here in town, and, you know, you see neighbors that ruin the economic value of the, of the property next door. And it's not right. I mean, we're, we live in a community, and we have to respect our neighbors and, you know, safeguard their investments in their property, just like we would want it for ourselves. And I think that you're going about it in a good way, and that you can do it in a way that still allows people a certain amount of leeway. We can trust the people that you have here in the city to enforce the law. There's people going around, you know, kind of with scare tactics, like, oh, you won't be able to have a garden, or have something flowering, or, you know what I mean? That's not the point of this, and that's not the way it's going to be enforced. It's for really bad situations that I've seen over and over again, and it really does hurt people. And it, you know, we're not a wealthy community, and we have to watch out for each other. So I really appreciate if you would consider voting for that, and that's all I need to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. McAvoy? You want to wait till your issue comes up?
I'm sorry. I think I signed that by accident.
Okay. I'm going to mark you off then. Bo Sotory? With it! Don, will you take care of that issue?
Who's there?
It's Bo. Don't let him in.
That's a lot of money here on TV, let me tell you. The building manager to the rescue. Hi there. Thank you. This is Bo Sotory, and I wanted to address ordinance number 2206 on vacating the Mcune and the portion of Hartman Street on the third reading. And I'd also like to thank you all for going through all three readings on that, because, you know, I'm out of town on some times, and I missed the addresses on that. And, but, a couple of points I wanted to make is, while you've had this on your, on your agenda for the last couple of months, this has actually been in discussion in commissions for the last couple of years. This has been dealt with and with lawyers and litigation and lots of meetings. There's been public hearings about this. There's been, there's been onsite visits, and it's been discussed in commission a great deal. And then when it was brought to your table, I didn't even know it was on the agenda. I was watching the meeting, and I was so surprised to see it here, because the commissions had, had been opposed to it in general. And, and then as it was discussed at the table, it became seemingly evident to me that no one had seen these commission meetings or talked about them, because of the questions that were asked and the things that were discussed. It was like all this had been addressed over a couple of years. And, and so the, the final thoughts I wanted to share with you before you address this is that in vacating this property down there, you're really not solving any problems for the city. You're actually creating problems for the city, because right now, you've got a turnaround spot down there. And you have businesses on Wall Street, lodging businesses. You have our visitors going up and down Wall Street trying to find this business or that lodging. And, and then you have other businesses that people are looking for, as well as lots of residents. Everyone knows that Wall Street has lots of residences. They have lots of visitors looking for this house or that house, and they all end up on Amity on occasion, and then they're having to turn around, because it's a dead end. Now, Eureka's filled with lots of dead-end streets, and we can't solve all the turnaround problems, but this particular one has a turnaround right there. And it's been brought up repeatedly that, well, we need to vacate this because it's the proximity to the house. Well, when I'm driving down Wall Street, every doorway on Wall Street's within 20 feet of the asphalt. Yet when you get down to the end of Amity, where this turnaround is, the house is 60 feet away. And, and this is a perfect place for our citizens to turn around, our visitors to turn around, and, and for you to just vacate it so they can gait it, then you're pushing everyone who's come down that street, for whatever reason, into somebody else's driveway. So I would like you to reconsider this third reading and evaluate really whether you're solving any problems for anyone, or whether you can then look to, to help solve problems for the community and the traffic on Wall Street and Amity. Thank you.
Ms. Becky Gillette?
Hi, I'm Becky Gillette. I wanted to talk about the Clean City Ordinance, and one of my first concerns is about the definition of weeds and the fact that this says you have to cut your grass. Stephen Foster's internationally well-known herbalist. He's the author of this book, Peterson Field Guide Medicinal Plants Book. You can see how many marks I have in it. I've had this for probably 30 years. A lot of the wild plants that I have in my yard, and that we have in the city, are medicinal or wild edibles. Some person might look at this and say, this is a wild burdock. It's a terrible weed. Cut it down. This is actually a Japanese variety of burdock that I grow in my yard that is a good medicinal. It purifies the liver. It's been used for thousands of years in medicine. This is henbit. It's an awful weed in one way, and I've tried, I've spent hours pulling this out of my garden, but the bees love it. And so I leave portions of my garden in this for the bees which are endangered. Stephen Foster has spoken out against the provision of this regarding weeds. He's doing like a big workshop next weekend about medicinal weeds that grow in our area. So I think that you need to define weeds if you're going to sell people they have to cut their grass. The second thing I'm really concerned about is that I think this could cause destruction of some historic buildings that could be saved. And I want to give one recent example, and that is Crescent Dragon Wagon's house that she spent like 25 years in, the Innkeeper's Cottage. I thought it was a tear-down. I think the city was considering demolishing it, but somebody who really cared about the historic value of that property has purchased it, renovated, and saved that building. So I'm not sure that it's always the city's responsibility to decide when something's too far gone to have, to be replaced. The other thing is that I already feel like we have some of the most onerous regulations of any town in the country. I mean, you have to get a permit to paint your house the same color in this town, and you have to get it every year. This is putting more regulations on us, and I don't think that they're always evenly enforced. That's not what I've seen. The, the other thing is that I feel like this is actually, could be a form of class warfare. They're lower-income people. They may, they may have more building materials that they keep around. Their place may not look as nice as other people would like it. But this is their home, and they may have nowhere else to live. I'm just, don't feel like it is fair to, you know, just to have this one, like Disneyland standard for everybody in town. I feel like that this is government overreach, and it's encroachment on private property rights, and I really wish that there would be some better discussion of it. And I know the intention is good. I heard what Penny said, and I, I mean, I hear that too, that when you have a neighbor who's a hoarding act or something, that something needs to be done. But I feel like the present code does have provisions in there, and that they need to be enforced before we go through a major rewrite like this. The other thing is just, I feel like the city doing this is a bit hypocritical, when I have been sitting, and I cannot eat the watercress out of my spring because of sewage contamination that's coming down into it from above the hill. I called last week about-
Becky, you're timed.
Is my time up?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Patterson? Come on, come on in.
My name's Laura Voyers-Patterson. Many of you know my dad, Bill Voyers. And I don't know if I'm here in the right order. I'm not here for anything that's on your docket, but I came to talk to Mayor Page today, and I've talked to Bruce Levine with the Parks Department, because I called last Friday trying to beg Glenn to booth, because I have a difficult situation with my father, who's 91, and becoming very mobile and incapable. And they have a home where he's in a downstairs bedroom. He's fallen multiple times in the last few weeks. One of these falls is going to put him in a place that he doesn't want to be in in his life, and many of us, we don't want to see our parents in. They have a second small house right behind their house. They own five different lots. I can give you guys a, I don't know if you guys want this kind of stuff to look at, but basically, there's-
Move this pass around.
A path, yeah, I put some for everybody. There's a path across, there's three pictures. A path across from one house to the other. It's his fish house. It was his office. And it is between the two houses. It's actually a platted alleyway, and he is no longer able and is to make that walk over, but at this point, we need to get him on one floor. And the only way that, he cannot, the house that they're in, the first floor, does not have accessible bathroom. It does not have an accessible, we have a fully accessible little house behind theirs, and we're talking about trying to get approval from everybody here at the city for a temporary walkway to be built, like a deck, four foot wide, that will accommodate a walker, a wheelchair, or himself getting in it with his walker. Safe walkway over there, but also so we can move his room and everything to this house so we'll all be on one level. And there's a handicap bathroom there already set up. We have room for him there to be able to use walker and mobility assistance here in the future. And I need to have this happen for my dad, and I'm hoping that the group of you will consider, and maybe if I'm out of order, I don't know how you guys do things, that you can, I'm going to the Historic Commission to get the okay, and they sent Ed, I mean, Bruce Levine over, and he's okayed. So that's it. I just need to have at least a temporary thing. I don't know how much longer my dad's going to make it. If he makes it two years, I'll be blessed, but I've got to give him the place also, because the home they live in right now, with the belongings they have there, we don't feel that somebody can come in there as a caregiver, that it's safe, that their belongings would be safe, and he would be in this extra house that doesn't have very personal and some things that are expensive, and we'd be a little bit more open, I think, they would be more open to accepting the help that he needs right now. So what else should I say?
Would you like to put it on the agenda for discussion?
When can I put it on an agenda to a dis-
We'll need two members to-
Kind of an emergency situation. I'm here for a week or two, and-
I'd vote to put it on.
And I'll second that.
Okay. May I second it? Okay, it's on the next agenda then.
For?
Discussion further by the city council. Right now, they can't discuss it, because it's not on the agenda.
And when will the next one be?
Two weeks. Two weeks.
Is there any way to do a consent before that, or?
The council could go ahead and, and I guess, you'd have to figure out through Mr. Weber what the eccentricities of this would be to get this to, Mr. Mitchell, go ahead.
And that would make total sense to us, but usually when we, we do something like this, don't we usually get something from planning, and then we also, Parks signs off on it, which she said he did, which is great. And then if planning could sign off on it, then could it come to us?
It sounds like that they're not actually asking to vacate it, but yes, before you actually do something, you, you really need to, it sounds like it is part of a green space, you're going to have to take control of it back from the park. So Parks needs to send their little memo to you. You probably do have to wait two weeks.
I have kind of a drawing here that's just, it's a wooden four-foot walkway that will be, because the level of each house, as you see, has to go down and then up.
Next, ma'am. Mr. McLung?
What is she wanting permission from us? Is just, just the permission to cross the alley?
To expedite the matter since the city property.
To build the walkway across the alley, because there are two homes are, as somebody said, they don't know why the alley was never vacated years ago with their homes, but yes, to put, put a walkway, a wooden walkway at the exact same level of both houses will be even, so we can do wheelchair or whatever's needed in the future. So any way that we could expedite that, because I'm kind of very urgent.
Couldn't Parks, can they enter into some kind of a lease or something? Can they do that?
They've done that in the years past.
Temporary.
The city's done that, but technically, for the city to lease it to her, Parks is going to have to make the recommendation, and you're going to have to do the lease, because the city controls the right to lease or give away property.
Well, he's here now.
Not the parks. Not the parks.
Okay, before we get too much further on, do y'all want to go ahead and discuss this now and take care of it or?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, so we need to add this to the agenda under probably new business number three?
New business number three.
Okay.
Well, can we move that?
If you want to grab a chair.
So, I need to stick around?
Yes, ma'am. Grab a chair. You can come over here and sit if you want to. You'd be out of the, the line of fire. Okay, this is number three. Okay, uh, these are not, these is old, right? These are old ones? Okay, that takes us out of, uh, public comments, puts us into an award presentation by Cruising Associates. And Nathan, come up and-
Sweet guy, it's me.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, uh, my name's Nathan Rutledge.
Make sure this-
Yeah, I felt it. Didn't feel too hot.
Okay.
I'll hold it here.
This one?
Just go.
Yeah, that's good.
And I'm with Cruising Associates and I'm here to present, uh, Eureka Springs with the City of Distinction Award tonight. Um, you've received awards in the past and you're starting to kind of rack them up, I feel like. For, for those of you that don't know and those watching, uh, the City of Distinction Awards were something created by Arkansas Business. Arkansas Business, uh, over past years has given out awards, uh, such as Arkansas Business of the Year Award, CFO of the Year Award, Executive of the Year Award. And a few years ago, they decided to, uh, come up with something to recognize cities around our state for the good things that they're doing. Uh, not only to recognize them and to bring an award for them, but also, uh, is a great way to share ideas, a great way to share the things that you're doing with other communities of similar size or smaller or larger and to exhibit those and to show them off for you and for other cities to learn from you. So, if you'll notice in what I handed out to you, that on, uh, a couple of pages in here, we've got a, a black page, 2013 City of Distinction Award winners. There's six different categories. Uh, workforce development, main street preservation, quality of life, green energy, tourism development, and technology advancement. And you'll notice on the top right there that, uh, Eureka Springs is a winner in the, uh, green energy conservation initiatives. And page 22 is the write-up and, and every year, Arkansas Business has done a great job. This is an insert to one of their, uh, regular distributions. And they've got anything that you want to read about other cities and what they're doing. If you want to see what somebody else is doing, what Fayetteville's doing or what, uh, Magnolia's doing, you can learn and see what they're being recognized for. And, and our involvement is, uh, we've been involved for the past three years and been excited to be a partner with Arkansas Business is we do bond financing. So, a lot of these projects we've actually financed. And so, we get excited to be able to come, uh, and deliver all of these awards. They're actually giving out to the, uh, everyone as a whole. If you went to the Municipal League Winter Conference in Rogers. And then our job, well, with Arkansas Business as part of, of the teammate is to go to each individual city and make sure that they receive an award in front of their own people, in front of their own, uh, community. So, we're excited to be here tonight. If you'll notice, uh, page 22, they've got a great picture with, uh, a group here that's been working on the project. You notice it says a rain garden. So, a winner in green initiatives, uh, fewer than 5,000 people. The title reads, "Eureka Springs is many things, including and especially green." So, of the things that they like to point out, not only a good project and something that's worthy for a community, um, but also something that shows the teamwork. Most of these, uh, awards are given for projects that, that Mayor Morse here didn't just do on his own or the council didn't just do on their own, but it takes a group effort. So, I tried to circle a few of the, uh, team effort participants here. The Eureka Springs Public Works Department, the Eureka Springs Parks and Recreation Staff, as well as local volunteers such as a local Boy Scout who had a volunteer team out working in the rain garden, uh, the Ozarks Water Watch, uh, the Springs Committee of the Eureka Springs Parks and Recreation Commission, and even students from, uh, the nearby spring school. So, all that teamwork, all put together, another great project for Eureka Springs, the rain garden, which I'm sure the, the mayor could explain to you a little better than I could, but I know it's a watershed project and I know that's something big here with runoff and water. So, we're excited to be here, excited for you to win another award. And I sincerely apologize that it's April and I'm just now here. Uh, we were talking beforehand. I think I bring the cold weather with me. The few times we've tried to schedule it, it's been snowing. As you know, we've had a, a tough time and now it almost got there today.
There you go.
So, congratulations for, uh, Eureka Springs, another award for green initiatives.
Okay, back to me. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Diane, you want to give her custody of this? Okay. That moves us into unfinished business. We move number nine unfinished up to before number one. So, Ms. Sandy, come on up. Motion to discuss.
So moved?
Second.
Okay.
Thank you, and, uh, I'm Sandy Martin. I'm here on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, um, the Arkansas - with Mike Bishop.
Yes.
Um, and the Arkansas Film Commission as well as the Arts Council. Uh, the film incentive, uh, status is that we had promised to come back to you with a skeleton ordinance. Christopher Crane was intending to be here tonight. He had a, uh, death of a very dear friend of his and couldn't make it, but he will be in within the next 10 days or so. Um, he did have his legal team in the, uh, state, the Economic Development Department, draft the skeleton ordinance. It's a two-page, simple ordinance, uh, for your review that calls for a 2% tax rebate. And there is a blank, "We're recommending setting a minimum expenditure" before they could qualify for the 2%. The rest of the language is pretty much legal ease that, uh, Mr. Weaver will need to look at and see how it fits with the way our ordinances are written. Um, and, uh, Christopher also met with the Municipal League on behalf of finding out if there is any issue that we needed to consider for the City Council or an issue for CAPC. Um, they saw no, it, no problem at all or no issue. They were, uh, really quite for this, uh, initiative. Um, they have a copy of the ordinance and they're gonna write Christopher a formal letter of approval, uh, and any suggestions that they have. The other suggestion that Christopher had, which is important that we've talked about before, is a permit process and an approval process of some sort. So, you have one copy of kind of a stereotypical template and then two examples from Seattle and another one from Louisiana, I believe it is, um, to kind of consider for the permit process and the approval process. Christopher's recommendation is that there be some kind of process in place that the city can approve what the type of project is and how it reflects on Eureka Springs. If it's, uh, an activity that comes in and is just doing casting, like a project that's going on now, of course, they have not applied for an incentive. They wouldn't necessarily apply for a permit so we wouldn't know anything about them. Uh, but when they get to the point that they apply for a permit or they request any kind of, uh, location shooting, then we should have some kind of approval and a process, maybe a committee, uh, that might go through that and approve it so it doesn't necessarily stay at the council level. So, that's the first step in, uh, in our incentive request. We are going to present an amendment to the bylaws to the CAPC in the workshop next week, uh, to put on their agenda at the regular meeting two weeks after that. And Christopher's recommendation was to possibly set up a meeting with Mr. Weaver or have a conversation or, um, suggest that there is a subcommittee that works on the language and the minimums and the maximums or any changes that you might want to do to the skeleton ordinance. You have anything to add?
Of course.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Does somebody want a recommendation? This go to Mr. Weaver for polishing?
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, the skeleton ordinance proposal and the documents, tax documents go to Mr. Weaver for legal review.
I'll second.
You prefer a discussion on it? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Weaver. Did you get a copy, a couple, a full copy?
One, four, Charlie.
Yeah, I think we got that. Is that all of it?
Yes.
Okay. Any further on this matter? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mike. Okay, uh, brings us to regular number one, Discussion Ordinance 2206 to be a third read.
Motion to discuss.
Second. Floor is open.
What number are we on?
2206 according to the agenda. Mr. McClung, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules in place. Ordinance number 2206 on its third and final reading.
Second.
By title only.
Okay, that's the real call and we'll get a suspension issued.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.